Are we... This is the special meeting? Welcome to the special meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call?
Yes, council members, Brodmann.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Kasakyan.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Satyuan.
Here. May we have your report, please?
Yes, the agenda for the Tuesday, September 17, 2024, special public meeting of the-
I'm sorry, Mr. Ajunian. Go ahead.
I'll start over. The agenda for the Tuesday, September 17, 2024, special public meeting of the city council was posted on September 13, 2024, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Great. What's next?
Item one is community development regarding neighborhood services code enforcement direction, a council motion to provide direction on the methodology of code enforcement action.
Mr. Calvert.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. As you've heard in some recent council meetings, we have been discussing the idea of bringing forth this item to discuss how we, or essentially our methodology of how we go about our code enforcement. We've had a number of different ordinances passed in the past few years. We heard the quality of life discussions at a prior council session, and there have been some limitations in terms of how we conduct our enforcement. Evenings and weekends, we hear that about noise, we hear that about home sharing, we hear that about street vending. There's other ordinances that have been passed or other enforcement issues that require a little more of a proactive approach. There's also the discussion of how we prioritize some of these enforcement actions. Which ones do we go to first, essentially? Which are more important? And as an effort in the department, we have been working hard to find ways to become more efficient, to make our operations more efficient. So we're bringing forth this item in advance of our action plan, which we expect in late October, early November, to get some early guidance on what will help in shape and form that. We have some concepts and some ideas in here that we think would help address some of the challenges that we see on a day-to-day basis, some of the challenges we've heard from the community, or frustrations we've heard from council on how we go about conducting some of the enforcement. As we go through this presentation, do note that we've, you know, we've picked out a few examples. These are ones that we run into on a frequent basis. These are things that pose a challenge for us. For example, a leaf blower ban that was put into place, that was, the enforcement went into effect on September 1. As of about five minutes ago, we've received 31 complaints over that period of time, and there's not a whole lot we can do in terms of enforcement. That could also be said about our smoking ordinance and other things that require maybe a more proactive approach. So essentially, what Ms. Sad's going to present here is, there's kind of two requests. The first would be more of a temporary solution to help us deal with evenings and weekend issues. The other kind of a series of ideas that we have developed in community development that we would like pending council's directions, and which of these items that you find to be maybe able to solve some of our challenges, come back with some direction later, or come back with additional information based on that direction. So you kind of see a suite of enforcement options that we've formulated here that we think could help resolve some of the challenges we've experienced. With that said, I'd like to turn it over to our deputy director, Ms. Tom Arsat. She has a brief presentation to go over some of these items.
Welcome, Ms. Sad.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor and members of council. I'd like to begin by just going over our current neighborhood services process. As Mr. Calvert mentioned, it is a complaint-driven, or you may not have, it is a complaint-driven process. As complaints come in, they're scheduled with an appropriate level staff member, and that's without a set prioritization. Code enforcement in community development does oversee all of the Glendale municipal code and provides a remedy and oversight until compliance is met. In general, the process is you'll receive a notice of violation, it has a compliance date. If compliance isn't met, you'll receive a citation, and then there's escalating citations from there, escalating fines. We'll issue up to three, and then we'll refer to the case to the city attorney's office for prosecution. Some of the challenges we're facing currently is, because it is a complaint-based system, this can cause feuds between neighbors, as they are generally aware, someone reported them, and this can turn into an escalating series of issues where the code is used against neighbors. The neighbors are using the code against each other. The lack of prioritization means life and safety issues are on par with quality of life issues, and while staff can discern, using their best judgment, there is no set schedule on what is the priority over something else. The largest challenge, as Mr. Calvert mentioned, is that is effectively addressing those issues that fall within the evening hours or before our hours of operation, which leads to the police department having to respond to those which are generally administrative issues, or frustration by the public that enforcement isn't happening. And while today we are only discussing a handful of issues, or a handful of selected codes, these are ones that are in conflict with our current system, or the most common violations we come across. And so by providing direction to staff now, this would allow us to refine our enforcement across the board. To provide a larger picture on enforcement, while the Glendale municipal code has thousands of standards and laws, 500 of those have administrative citations attached to them, and those are, those 500 are the ones that we found at times we needed a more punitive approach to achieve that compliance. In the past year, staff conducted 13,000 inspections tied to the Glendale municipal code, so obviously, the items that we're covering today is not going to cover all of the violations that we encounter.
And with that said, council members, as I mentioned, there's certain examples we use. We made our best assumptions, and we put these into three different buckets that Ms. Sad will go through in a minute. There may be other codes or other enforcement actions that you believe should be brought forth more urgently, or should change our approach. So the ones that we're using are just meant to serve as examples, and really ones that we are seeking direction on, because they're ones that we struggle with. But by all means, if there are others that you're aware of, others that you would like to see changed, this would be a perfect time to bring that up.
Our first priority is urgent life, life and safety. This is generally straightforward. We understand work without permits, it's clear. Habitability issues within units is clear. With this, we'd actually like to strengthen our approach towards compliance. The others that are coming up, those would be, you know, is council's direction to be more lenient towards education, or tighten timelines, and be more punitive in those approaches. But, you know, work without permits, street vending, and we discussed the life and safety issues with those in the previous meeting, graffiti, which can be related to gang activity, street use, which can block visibility, stagnant pools, which can be breeding grounds. These are, these are life and safety issues, and so we don't necessarily have questions with those. But the next two categories, which we've broken into, priority quality of life and non-urgent priority quality of life, this is really where we are seeking council's feedback. You know, these are the things that, if left unchecked, could proliferate within the community, or these are recent ordinances that we, you know, because they're recent ordinances, we assume are top of mind for the council or the community. So we are seeking council's direction on what should actually be on this second greatest level of attention from staff following life and safety. And our last category is a non-urgent quality of life. For these, we're seeking council's direction on whether things like trash cans left out prior to or after collection day, or parkway standards is something the council would like us to meet with education, or it's something they'd like us to meet with enforcement and citations. I will say that things like trash cans left out and parkway standards are the, are amongst the most common complaints we do receive in the neighborhood services. So while this will continue to receive our attention, it's really just council's direction on what is that direction? Is it education-based, or is it something that escalates towards compliance? And on this slide is also correcting existing work without permits, signage without permits. These things we'll get to with some of the modifications or ideas that we have for improving code enforcement. As Mr. Calvert mentioned, one of the things that we're looking for right away is, how do we deal with those evening, evening activities that fall under code enforcement but we're not here for? So a night and weekend shift, if it was authorized by council through an overtime option, we could implement close to immediately. If we would need an administrative staff member, an associate inspector, and a code compliance inspector, overtime would eventually become A, exhaustive to staff, and B, be less frugal than new hires if night and weekend shift became a permanent option. So those are options for the, for the council to consider. But if nights and weekends was saying they wanted, the council wanted immediately implemented, we could, we could make that possible very shortly. And in these nights and weekends, we would focus on street vending, vacation rentals, and the noise ordinances.
Mayor and council members, the overtime, if that approach, overtime in evenings, is authorized by the council, again, that would be more of a temporary approach. We will come back at a later date, depending on your feedback on the coming items, on how to come up with a more permanent, long-term solution.
Can you walk me through that again? So the amounts that you're requesting as temporary would be just to cover these three?
The amounts that you see listed here is overtime for 14 hours per week for each of those three positions. This would be 14 hours per week per staff, for those three staff, for the entire year. Overtime is significantly more, it's 1.5 times is overtime. So new hires would come in at a lower rate. If this was a permanent solution, new hires would likely be a recommended route. But that's something we would flesh out completely with an action plan. But if council did want to see street, you know, these types of night and weekend operations that code enforcement is currently incapable of handling, be put with code enforcement to enforce, this is a temporary solution.
If there are other ordinances that you would like the staff to be looking at during this time, we obviously could put that into the hop. This wouldn't take the full amount of hours necessarily. So we're open to that feedback and to include in this. These are just the three that we find to be the most challenging and would focus on, as we've heard from both the council and the community.
Can you re, oh, these three here?
The street vending, the vacation rental, and the noise ordinance. But if there are other ones, if there are other things going on, obviously, they would issue citation. They wouldn't just be focused on that if they came across other incidents while they were out. But if there are other ones that you'd specifically like us to include as part of these three, we can do that.
So what I'm hearing is, if they're going out for street vending, and then they hear or see a gas leaf blower, then they're gonna utilize that time to do that?
Any other case that may be out there, if they have the time and capacity to deal with that, I would, I would highly doubt that we would have someone with a gas leaf blower in the evenings, but say, smoking ordinance, right? They could, they could find violations for that. They would still be open to issuing violations or citations for any other items. These would just be the areas of focus. The main reason why we would want to pursue the strategy, because we hear about these three on a frequent basis. There's not a lot of opportunity for us to be able to do anything with that, and then the burden falls on police, and that's whether or not police have a higher priority to deal with than this. Again, these are administrative actions, citations, not criminal.
So the mayor, just to add to what staff has already mentioned, the focus will be on these three violations, essentially. The reason for approving overtime will be for these three, to address these three violations.
Okay. I'm gonna keep my questions to the-
The, we would ensure that the staff had a full load of work for those hours. These are just things that we can't address during operating hours, and so it would be an opportunity for us to address those during that time. But if there are other businesses that needed an inspection, or residents, we could also add that into the schedule. But these are, this would be the opportunity for us to address these effectively. As Mr. Calvert mentioned, this is the preemptive discussion to the action plan discussion. So other things that we would like to include in the action plan, if this is something the council would like to see in the action plan, we've outlined. Education has always been a big part of discussions here, the education outreach. We do education as part of our notice of violations, as part of our warning notices with, with residents and businesses. But if that was an area of focus instead, we could develop flyers on other pieces of information or host meetings. The incentive programs, this has kind of come in two different ways. One would be like a marketing incentive, you know, businesses that are in compliance with whatever ordinance it is that we have, we could get them a window cling, or we could do a campaign for businesses that fall into that compliance category. First, and social media, you know, marketing those businesses, make the proact, the, doing the right thing be the incentive. The other side would be a financial incentive, a financial program to assist businesses in getting to that place. So whichever direction with the incentive, or both, that the council wanted to see us flesh out more through the action plan, we could. Proactive enforcement, as we've mentioned, code enforcement is complaint-based. The inspectors are not driving around, they're not looking for violations. When violations come in, that's when we deal with them. The proactive enforcement would give us the ability to handle ordinances that are better served in a proactive manner, such as the smoking ordinance, or the leaf blower ordinance, things that, because we have to see the violation, there's no, you know, unless we're following, you know, smokers walking out for cigarette breaks, or leaf blowers, we're not gonna catch them. We're never gonna be able to effectively enforce those. So a proactive enforcement gives us the opportunity to do that. Mediation services is something that has come to us just by way of, because we are complaint-based, because this often causes feuds between neighbors, or sometimes the dispute between neighbors actually isn't even a code-based issue. We think that a mediation service to parties would help alleviate a lot of frustration between those two parties. It'd be able to, it'd offer staff an ability to solve problems before they continue to escalate. So this, this is more of a betterment to the community as opposed to like a code enforcement side, but the mediation service is something we've noticed may be helpful. We also, for urgent and priority cases, if the, while we are talking about education, we also are looking at increased enforcement, increase in heightened enforcement, and if the, for those urgent and priority cases, if council did want to see a direction in which we were becoming more aggressive with certain cases, this would be an option there. And then an amnesty program and a special accommodations program, which I'll turn it over to Mr. Calvert.
So these two are dealing with a couple of different issues. One, when we discuss sort of the idea of an amnesty, and I know this has been discussed before with, with council, but with the new council, we wanted to bring it back again. This isn't forgiving everybody who's had a violation, say, a land use or building issue. But we have seen issues where somebody has done something to their home many, many years ago, somebody new has come in and bought it, and they are prohibited from doing the most minor of things. And the idea of, do we have some program that allows them to still be able to move forward with some sort of home improvement, or a business improvement, if something has been built, say, 20 years ago, one foot over the setback line, or whatever it may be? We've run into issues like that, where somebody is prohibited from being able to make a modest change to their home, or they have to go and tear down something. A good example that we have is, we had a garage at one point that was, I believe it was about two feet out of compliance and width, and the gentleman wanted to effectively increase the size of his pantry to his kitchen. He couldn't do that, because that was found to be out of violation. And in order to do something new, something out of violation needs to be corrected. Now, when I mention this, this would take a lot of vetting, a lot of work, that we would need to figure out what those kind of controls are, because we wouldn't want this to be something where it could run amok, where people could feign not knowing a change that happened that maybe they had done years before. So we would need to come up with some very tight rules and regulations. But we have had instances before where people are essentially cost-prohibited from being able to make changes, because it's something that may have happened on their property, or before they owned it, actually, without their knowledge, and they wouldn't, they weren't given the information, whether it be through the realtor, or they didn't come and ask for that from us. Again, we would have to come up with a very careful plan on this, so it's not abused. But it could be something that would be beneficial, so that we wouldn't have to go and issue citations, enforcements prohibit people from making these kind of modest improvements. The last there, the special accommodations. We've also seen instances where, say, a senior citizen who owns a home, maybe they're financially restrictive, maybe restricted, maybe they don't have the ability to make the changes, or even, you know, that's not at the forefront of their minds. Do we have some sort of program process that takes into account age, income, things of that nature, and how we can let them slowly come into compliance? Maybe we're over a period of time, so we're not coming and saying, you have to update your entire porch that might have been built a few years ago slightly out of compliance. Again, maybe that falls under similar amnesty program, but some sort of good customer service-facing opportunities that we can allow those with limited abilities, maybe limited resources, to come into compliance in a manner that is less punitive, more accommodating for their, their life circumstances. I would say that both of these, we would have to approach very carefully. We would want to make sure that we don't have any kind of loopholes to see that be abused. But I do think there would be some good opportunities for us to, one, build some goodwill with the community, two, also take into people's special circumstances, and let them still be able to enjoy their home, to enjoy the business that they have, and the rights that they, they have to that.
Great. Before, I know, you have questions, I'd like to take the speakers first, and then we'll take the questions and comments from council.
Rick Lemo, you have three minutes. Good afternoon, thank you, Mayor, council, and city staff. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the Greater Downtown Glendale Association, but not just them. I want to talk to you today about a very different kind of courage. We certainly have great courage with our police department, with our armed forces, and most of our volunteers. But I would like you to look at the perspective of courage from a business owner or a property owner's point of view. Let's start with the business owner. In today's world, in the state of California, a business owner has the, has the courage to invest a lot of money in opening a business. They have the courage to, in most cases, be the main employer of that business, and employee. In many cases, they've got to get up every day and do what every one of us has to do with our family, and then go run a business, and then pay the bills at the end of that day. Here's where they really have to show courage. They have to compete with someone who does not ever have to pay rent, who doesn't have to answer to a landlord, who doesn't have to follow most of the laws they have to follow. And they can be camped out at a certain distance, right outside their business, a few feet away to make, within the laws of the state of California. To go a little bit further with that courage, they have to pay an assessment, in our, in our cases, to the Greater Downtown Glendale Association. One of the things that's done is we clean the sidewalks for people who never pay rent, do not pay tax, do not pay a landlord of any kind, have literally no responsibilities as every other citizen does. And that takes a very special kind of courage. Now, let's put ourselves in the property owner's shoes. They have to put up the complaints from that tenant, because they can't generate enough business to go ahead and make their rent payment, and to go ahead and conduct business. I would like you to think of that as you come up with code, because these people deserve to be represented in the state of California. Like to remind you that I was taught a long time ago, don't gripe about something unless you're willing to fix it. Well, the Downtown Glendale Association and our executive director, myself, and other members are willing to participate in a public rights-of-way task force. We say task force because that's only a couple of council members. It doesn't follow all the traditional Brown Act meeting notification and all, in case we don't have enough people attend. But we'd like to be able to address the problems that we're all facing every single day. This is a lot more intense than you may know if you're not getting the complaints. And what I heard from our police chief in our last meeting is, they need your help.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Jackie Gish, you're live. You have three minutes, Jackie. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mayor Satyuan, city council members. While I am in agreement on defining categories for code violations, I think there are some items that don't fit well in the suggested category. For instance, the gas leaf blower ban. It is not as urgent as the items which, which could cause imminent danger, such as habitability issues, including no heating or gas. However, gas leaf blowers are definitely a health and safety concern because of the high amount of pollution they produce. The California Air Resources Board says that using a commercial gas leaf blower for one hour produces as much smog-forming pollution as driving 1,700 miles in a car. In addition to regional air quality, it also poses a large health hazard for the operator. For these reasons, I urge you to put a higher priority on the gas leaf blower ban. This may require after-hours personnel to observe the violations, because typically, the gardening people are there all daytime hours into early evenings, or to, it would require people to communicate with the homeowners. Right now, I think we have a very low level of compliance, and in order to get that higher, it needs to be much more, gets, needs to much more attention. On the plastics ordinance, I really like the idea of incentives, such as being able to display a compliance certificate. And I really want to thank staff for a thoughtful discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Garpetian, followed by councilmember Brodmann.
As far as the trash cans go, if they're left outside or what have you, it's not just the thing if they, they're left outside for several days or what. I think sometimes if you put the wrong material in the wrong bin, you know, it happened to us once that I believe the gardener put, has enough landscaping trash, if you will, and they didn't have enough room in the green bin. They put some of it in the recycling bin, and we got a notice. They didn't pick up the recycling bin, and there was a notice, you know, hung on the, on the handle, said, look, you mixed this material, you have to remove. So we removed it. Next week, they picked it up. I think just a notice on the, on the bin that says this was left outside, and there may be consequences or what have you. I think that would, that would, that would be good enough for that. As far as the amnesty programs, I have a couple of questions. There are homes in Glendale that, I know you mentioned, if it's, there's a, an addition done, like the garage was a foot or two outside the, where it was supposed to be in the, in the setback, for example. How about the windows? Because I think biggest issue is the windows. There are residential neighborhoods that windows were replaced, maybe 10, 15 years ago. Someone comes in and purchases it, and next thing happens, if you don't have a good relationship with one of your neighbors, they can, they can report that house. And when you go drive the same street, maybe five out of 25 houses, they have the same issue. The windows were replaced. How are we going to push that? Because I'm not for people just replacing their windows with no permits today, but the ones that was done a long time ago, and you can tell by the quality of the window, or by the wear and tear on the window that was done, I don't know, 10 years ago, and somebody just bought it today, because that's a big ticket, you know, replacing your windows today. It's a, no one will finance it, and it's, it all has to come out from, you know, out of pocket, basically. So something, I don't, you may not have that, that answer today, but I think that's something that we need to look into for the future as well. As far as the enforcement's go, after-hours, I think the short-term rentals, is that the, like Airbnb type? Yeah, that's very important. The street vending, after-hours, that we have to address is very important, in general, because as was mentioned, people do the same business as a restaurant owner with no responsibilities or accountability. Noise ordinance is important? I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I thought you were asking, yes, the noise ordinance.
Yes, noise ordinance. And life and safety, of course, if there are additions done, or structures built that, there are nuisance, and they're hazardous, and it's a life safety issue. I'm all for that. Leave work without permit, I mean, most of the things that we can, with one or two inspectors, there's so much we can do today. And also, the, the funding that, you know, the, the cost, I don't know, because the fully burdened rates, are the new hires, if they are hourly, they don't get the same first benefit as the current?
Hourly, hourly workers do get- Hourly workers do get, there is a benefit load associated with them, because we have, because the overtime was calculated based on current staff. I looked at where the current staff, what levels the current staff is paid at, and so it's not exactly comparable. Overtime is a more expensive pay rate than regular time. So overtime, new hires would become a more cost-effective approach to this.
And the other question, the new hires, the customer service representative is $76,000, but the ones that currently we have is $44,000. Why is that big difference between the two?
For the overtime, that is using existing staff on an overtime basis, if we moved into a permanent nights and weekends program, I would suggest that we hire a full-time customer service representative, so that one would not just be that limited hours of nights and weekends, that would be an additional full-time staff member, as opposed to the overtime version, which is just those additional 14 hours.
And between the two, just to start with, which one do you recommend? To use our current staff or hire new hourly employees? Because the current staff, I think they're more, they know what's going on in the city, they know the issues, inspectors are trained, I don't know, I'm just asking as to which one do you think is a better way to go?
Councilmembers, the request for this afternoon really be that, at least a temporary approach for the nights and weekends to be able to address these. I think we would need to go back and do a broader analysis. We do put in what we expect in terms of positions. If you were to choose any of these, and do note that if you want us to investigate any of these, you're not making a decision today. You're not committing to new staff members, you're not committing to that policy. We go do the work, do the evaluation. You're correct, our existing staff members are going to be much more effective. Our plan would be to use our existing staff members for the overtime and the weekends. But I would say, as we kind of caution the report, there is going to be a kind of a time horizon on that before we start to see things like burnout, depending on how much of these issues we continue to see rolling. Maybe they cease, maybe they start to go away, and we don't need to be as aggressive in that overtime, but I do think we would need to take a longer-term approach at some point, and our thought is to come back during that action plan to do that, give you a full analysis of what it would take to continue to do overtime or to add staff members, and also to be able to look at how well this has performed today during this timeframe.
Okay, yeah, as I mentioned, I'm for Airbnb, our short-term rentals, street vending, noise ordinance, life and safety, and start with these and see what kind of manpower do we need after-hours, and then add the rest, because I think we need to be efficient, so it will pay off. That's all I have right now.
Yeah, okay, so let me start with, so the proposal for nights, weekends, I do support that. I think your kind of interim approach makes sense, and then considering maybe hiring staff later. I mean, I, for a long time, and you know, I've said this, I think, you know, you're understaffed in code enforcement, so if it were, I mean, if you need people anyway just to do the basic workload that, you know, not including weekends and evenings, I would support that as well. I think, I just think we need more, and, you know, and I want to be clear, it's not about leaning into being punitive. That's not what I want. I like the approach we take. The problem is that there are some people who will not come into compliance until they're at least threatened with a citation. There is, you know, most will do it when you provide the education, but some won't. And I won't name names, but I know of one of our major eateries on Brand Avenue, on Brand Boulevard, why did I say Brand Avenue? Brand Boulevard. One of our major eateries who's been told again and again and again about the foodware-on-request ordinance, which is not just a city ordinance, it's also state law. They just don't, they're not going to comply, just because they don't want to, they don't think, they just don't think we're going to take it seriously. So they continuously ignore us, it's been probably a couple of years. Another example is, again, I don't want to be too specific, but I know somebody who has a gardener who just says, "I'm never going to use the electric stuff," and, you know, "We have these bans in other cities, nobody ever enforces it, and so I'm not going to do it." So it's those, it's, I think, you know, what's that, what's, I mean, Teddy Roosevelt probably isn't the best example, but, you know, speak softly and carry a big stick. I don't think we need a big stick, but I think you have to have that stick there. People have to know it's there, otherwise they won't listen to the soft speaking, right? So I think it's a combination, it's always a combination, and so I do think we need more. A couple other things I just thought I'd mention, yeah, for the evening, if we do evening and weekends, I agree with those kinds of issues, noise, vacation rentals, street vending. One other thing I want to mention is sometimes we have these very, you know, acute kind of emergency situations, like somebody tearing down a historic property, or more often we see, you know, trees being cut on weekends, sometimes intentionally on the weekend because we don't have code enforcement out there. Those things have to be, those, you know, aren't necessarily life and safety, but like the tree, once it's cut, it's gone, so if it's a protected tree, so those, I know we do jump on those very quickly when they happen, but those would, I would like to include in evening and weekend, if it's that kind of an urgent situation, something's being destroyed that, you know, once it's gone, it's gone. The, you know, mediation, I like that idea. Amnesty and the special accommodation, I generally do, as long as we're very careful about it. If the goal is, you know, give a little bit more flexibility to get into compliance, that makes sense, as long as, you know, we still have that ultimate goal to get into compliance. And then the other thing I was going to say, oh, specifically on, I think, on leaf blowers, I would, this is, maybe, this is not really, I'm going away from code enforcement a little bit to the education side, which wouldn't really be your team, I don't think, but I think we need a much more focused education effort, because this is a big culture shift, this is a big behavior shift, and I know that this group that helped us, AGSA, that has helped us develop all this, they are doing a program, I think, which sounds very effective in South Pasadena, where they, basically when there's complaints about, you know, leaf blowers, you know there's a hotspot, they'll go into that neighborhood, and they'll go in on the weekends, or they'll go in whenever, and they will go and talk to the gardeners. Sometimes they'll bring the electric equipment and let them try it, and they'll explain, you know, about the programs we have. I think that if we really lean into that type of approach, we could probably get a whole lot of compliance, and we don't need to get into the punitive stuff. So I would, you know, I don't know, Mr. City Manager, that's more of maybe something that, we've talked about that before, but I'd like us, specifically on that one, that's a tough one, and people, you know, really need to understand, the gardeners really need to understand how you do it, because I think they don't understand, they think, "Well, it's not going to work." They're thinking of Home Depot tools, and that's not what it's about, so. So I think there's specifically a strong education campaign, but we need that stick eventually, if you get somebody who just says, "I'm never going to do it."
And to add to the education part, because Councilmember Brodmann, that is saying that does make a huge difference. One of the things I think is, people sometimes don't know what they're doing is a violation, like with the amnesty program. We've tried to put some of those violations a little more forefront, at least on the code enforcement page, and I realize that that is something that is not, where someone who doesn't know about violations isn't going, but we've added an ability for people to directly notify us about vacation rentals and street vending, and we've started to post a little bit more about those types of things on the social media, but it's to try and educate, the education has been a greater focus of ours, we'd like to continue to make it a focus. This program does sound, you know, actually putting their equipment in their hands, so it's not like saying that we, you know, could probably get them to come out to Glendale.
I think especially with this area, which is, it's a difficult change for some people, so that's what I would say.
Councilmember Natche, right?
I think we do need to increase enforcement. The only thing, when you do your final evaluation, I'm sure you will realize that new hires with a new staff at step one also take a step two and step three and step four. So I know with some of our departments, like police and fire, we tend to veer towards the overtime model, because it does provide savings in the long run. The other question is, what do we do with fences, front yard fences? Are those being, does code enforcement deal with that, or are we on a moratorium?
Mayor, councilmembers, currently code enforcement does deal with that when we receive the complaints. I will state that we do plan on bringing an item as part of our process improvement to consider how we, what those rules are around fences. We've heard various feedback from the community, from councilmembers as well, that's something that we plan to take up as a discussion in October.
Okay, but in any event, a chain link fence is not permitted at all?
Correct, correct.
Okay, I've seen a few of those around. The last thing is about the leaf blowers. Who receives a citation for a leaf blower?
The property owner does.
Property owner does. And his crime is hiring someone that doesn't have a battery?
The ordinance is, the first witnessed violation is a warning, so a code enforcement officer would see it, and they're provided a warning. Second infraction is a citation, and it's to the property owner.
Have we ever taken any of those to court? Are those, do those hold up?
Enforcement started as of September 1st, and we have not issued citations as of yet.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not home when my gardener comes, I don't know what he has, I have a feeling he has gas. So I would be responsible for that, for not, for improper hiring, or?
I think the intent would be providing that notice-less education the first time, we've now made the homeowner aware that the ordinance now requires electric instead of gas, and if you hire a new one and/or continue to bring that one back, the assumption would be that that would, then at that point, be intentional.
Why don't, why don't we cite the user of the banned instrument?
That was ultimately a direction from the council as part of that ordinance, whatever was adopted.
I don't know, I don't, that seems a little bit off to me, but, yeah. You want to add to that?
I was the only one that voted against it, not because I don't believe in it, but I don't believe, I stated then that I'd rather create an incentive program. There was a very long discussion about who gets the notice, and the council ultimately, at the time, decided that I would be the homeowner, because, so.
You wanted the homeowner, or you didn't?
I voted against it, I didn't want any of it.
Yeah.
Let's create an incentive program.
You know, from a legal standpoint, you know, I could see, "Judge, I didn't do anything, I just hired, you know, Sanchez gardening, and I wasn't home," and whatever, but that's a different discussion, but, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Sackin?
Yes, thank you. I do believe that we need more staffing regardless of how we prioritize this, particularly for violations that are happening over the weekends. We've heard, all of us, I believe, loud and clear from various members of our communities and constituents about whether it's Airbnb's, illegal Airbnb's, or illegal short-term rentals. The noise violations, I will say that I believe police are pretty adept at responding to those. However, you know, I can see how our police could be better utilized in other ways of carrying out their duties versus showing up to a place that has either loud music or whatever other violations of the noise ordinance, maybe. So these short-term rentals, vacation rentals, street vending certainly is a top priority for me to ensure that these individuals who are taking over public spaces and sidewalks and not adhering to any of the county health codes are being monitored and cited when in violation. I saw in your initial thing about the graffiti, and graffiti is unseemly, and I'd like to see it removed as soon as it's put up, but in terms of immediate danger or threat to it, I think that working with the property owner, informing them that they have to remove it is fine when it comes up. I don't know how urgent it is to do that on a Saturday or a Sunday, because I don't think anyone who's notified of it on a Saturday or Sunday is going to necessarily run out and remove it. Maybe some people might, but I think that, you know, waiting a few days to give notice during normal business hours suffices. The main issue in terms of enforcement of our codes is when people are doing things, as was stated, when they feel that perhaps there is no watchful eye from the city. And that comes with the construction issues, when people are doing illegal constructions, when people are doing trimming of trees, because they think, "Well, it's a Saturday and Sunday, no one from the city is working, except for maybe the police and fire, so while there's no one out there patrolling or who can respond, I'll try to do something outside of the normal boundaries of whatever the city council has passed or the ordinance has state." So those are the things that I believe are most critical. In terms of the leaf blowers, I do like the suggestion of what South Pasadena has done. I firmly believe, and although I'm in favor of the purpose of replacing gas leaf blowers with electric leaf blowers, the people that will be most affected by this are going to be the people that most rely on the work that their equipment provides them. So the South Pasadena approach, where someone can go out when there is a violation and say, "Hey, you know, it's maybe a specific task force that says, you know, we're going to go and show you what the replacement equipment is, and, you know, help you even achieve a replacement process for your equipment, trade-in, whatever it may be," I think is something I would be interested in exploring versus bringing the hammer down. I understand, you know, where Councilmember Brodmann is coming from, that there are some people who are going to be ignoring the rules and law, no matter, you know, if we don't enforce it, but I firmly believe that most people want to cooperate, they just need to know what the rules are before, you know, there's enforcement, so. And as much as we can use carrots versus sticks, I'm for that. So I don't see those as immediate quality-of-life issues, and I may be in, you know, some of my colleagues may be in disagreement with that, although it sounds like most of us are in agreement. So, again, the most immediate ones, I think, are the street vending, short-term rentals, illegal work being done, tree trimmings, those are the things that I think on the weekend require our attention, and I do support the idea. Oh, and lastly, I support amnesty programs and special accommodations where appropriate. Mediation services also, I think, are important. You know, you alluded to this in the outset, that people may weaponize the code enforcement process against someone that they may have an issue with, and I've seen it, time and again, where someone calls in and says, "My neighbor has artificial turf installed," and that person gets a citation. I've gone to one street where one person received a citation, and there were two other, on the same block, two other homes that received, that had artificial turf, and they did not receive citations, because it is on a complaint-driven basis. That is fundamentally, if we're talking about what government's role is and what compliance is about, it's unfair to selectively cite someone when there are individuals in an area that have the same violation and do not receive a citation. I find something wrong with that fundamentally. Now, I know the city attorney or staff or someone can explain why we do the way, what we do and how we do it, but, again, it doesn't pass that smell test of what is fair, and I think that if there is, let's say, if someone calls and complains about a violation on something like that, you know, windows was a good example that Councilmember Garpetian brought up, then the person calling or issuing the complaint should be aware that if our staff goes out to inspect that, and they're on that street, and I don't know how often they go, will make it out to a specific street, that they're going to go up and down the street and see what other homes have, and everyone gets, you know, the same, is punished with the same switch, and perhaps at that point, that will temper someone's desire to use to use the code as a way of getting back at someone because, you know, they didn't say hello to them in the morning, or, you know, they don't pick up after their dog or whatever else the case may be. You know, because if we're, if the goal is to get compliance, and we should be looking for compliance across an area versus selective compliance enforcement, that's, again, not a very clear, well-articulated thought, perhaps in terms of helping you come up with a policy directive or implementation, but it's how I feel and what I see, and I'd like us to perhaps consider that when coming up with solutions as to how we can bring people into compliance.
Councilmember Kusakian? That's actually exactly what we're looking for, that is a proactive enforcement. So if it is those, you know, we are currently complaint-driven, so if there are issues like artificial turf, or not specifically, you know, if there is some other issue that the council feels deserves that type of proactive enforcement, that is the, that is the information we are seeking. I understand this is, artificial turf may not be it, and I understand the other issue, which is one neighbor gets one and another doesn't, but that is, that is the type of feedback.
Well, let's use windows as an example, right? We bring up windows, someone says, you know, this neighbor has, you know, these illegally installed windows, and, you know, we've had this, I think all of us at certain points have had this, where the resident who is the target of the complaint will come and say, "Look, I either bought this home like this, or, you know, this was done, you know, because I hired a person who did it," and guess what, there's five other houses on this block that have similar windows, but none of them are getting cited, right? That's where we, I see that issue and that problem, and, you know, it's something that I think just strikes me as somewhat unfair, and, again, I don't want to also create this culture of the city patrolling and looking for those violations. I think it, you know, you talk about amnesty, I will say that sometimes there are certain things that are not done according to code, which have been that way for almost 50 or 70 years, and if no one has complained in 50 or 70 years, it's hard for me to think that it's impacting the quality of life in a neighborhood, right? And I'll bring up one example, there are structures, it could be a shed built right up to the property line, which technically, for anyone watching, is not allowed, you need a four-foot, at least four-foot setback, right? Yeah, so, but, that shed has been there for generations, they have photos of their kid's, you know, fifth birthday from the 1980s with that shed exactly where it is, and then all of a sudden, it triggers a complaint. You know, how do we allow those types of things to continue when it hasn't had that type of a real quality of life issue until now? So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. All right. I'll start off with, I'm okay with what you have under life and safety. As it pertains to overtime, I'm okay with adding the Airbnb to it, but I do want to note that for the overtime employees that we're testing out now, I think one of your comments was that, you know, while they're out, they can also, I don't want to add funding, whether it's overtime, because that is, if someone stops by on the way to, say, a street vendor, they see something else, then it's adding to that funding that we're providing for these inspections, and that I'm not for. So the three or four areas that you've identified, which were street vending, Airbnbs, and like the noise, or life and safety issues, those are the things that I'm okay with for using for overtime right now, if that's clear. I think when we're talking about the item that you're going to be bringing back, it's really important for us to take a holistic approach to this. When I see these items and what we would be funding, I really do believe, and I've said this time and again, that instead of the stick, we should be providing a giant carrot. I've said this time and again, that we're passing policies that impact entire industries, whether it's our restaurants, whether it's our gardeners, whether it's our construction workers, without providing the support they need to move into that space. I'm wholeheartedly committed to the end goals of sustainability, but how we get there is where I have an issue, and so I don't believe that we should be chasing our gardeners or our restaurants. I would love to see some incentive programs be brought back, part of your action plan, that include helping our gardeners move into that space, our restaurants, whether it's maybe bulk buying as a city. I know that our sustainability office recently did an event, and we pretty much didn't have any restaurants that showed up to it, I stopped by. I had told staff that I'm happy to work with them on maybe doing some additional outreach for us to get input, but, again, I'm just coming from a place of wanting to make sure that we're helping these industries and these spaces move in that direction. I'm all for the amnesty program, I do think that we have to be very careful with it. I don't want to, I don't want us to create something where all of a sudden folks are starting to use that amnesty program to work around getting a certain permit and whatnot, so just be thoughtful in what you're bringing back. The remainder of the items that you've marked under priority, you know, the way I've kind of seen this report, and I think I spoke briefly, I spoke to both of you briefly on this, I'm thinking about our residents that can't pay their utility bills, I'm thinking about the small businesses that can't seem to make ends meet, and so what I'm thinking about, our overall budget and where we're putting our money towards, I don't want to be putting money towards chasing our residents and small businesses, I'm interested in supporting them in the different ways, and especially during these difficult times. So, any program that you've heard of or can think of that would help them in this space is what I'm interested in. I know that I also get a lot of complaints from our business owners, especially restaurant owners, about their utility costs, especially with the recent increases, and so that's kind of my thought process in all of this. I know that one of the items, though, that was part of our, so I would see this as not three buckets, I would see them as two buckets, I would see them as urgent and then everything else, and it seems like, for the most part, there was consensus on the dais on that front with the, with the exception of Councilmember Brotman, who brought up some of the environmental items. So I wouldn't mark, you know, I think when we're speaking about Mylar balloons, though, I think it was more than just that, I think they were talking about, Councilmember Kusakian, if you can correct me, it was more about the Mylar balloons.
Causing power outages.
Causing power outages with our utilities versus, so, the more education we can do on any of these, I think it would be nice for you guys to also work with the sustainability office, for them to give some additional input on some other programs that exist that we can help educate. I'm all for financing education, social media, other, you know, positive programs, but, you know, that's kind of where I'm at, I think that's pretty much it for, is there more that you're looking for? Do you have what you need? Do you feel like some, some things need clarification?
I was just going to try to recap that, actually, because, so, so if I may run through these really quick, it seems there are some that, we have some majority on it. From my understanding, all councilmembers support us moving towards the night and weekend shifts within this parameter that we've outlined here. I have two that are specifically stated education, are there additional councilmembers that would support more enhanced, us investigating, again, the things I'm about to outline here, ones we're going to dig deeper into, we'll try to figure out what fits in each category, and then our approach and what it would cost, but right now I have two that have specifically mentioned education, are there any more?
Am I one of the two?
Correct, Councilmember Brotman, Mayor Satrian, both of you.
I mean, in lieu of enforcement, prior to enforcement.
Correct, so what we would do when we come back is we're going to take a list of these, and we're going to place them into these categories of where we think it would apply. Right now, we gave you maybe eight or nine, right? We have 500. We're going to have to go into a deeper dive when we come back with the action plan, so we'll figure out where we kind of presume these things fall, and then we'll have that discussion next time around.
Just a quick comment on that, as far as the education goes, Councilmember Kusakian mentioned South Pasadena, there's a group, is that what you?
I've mentioned that.
You mentioned that, okay, I mean, okay, is that AGSA?
AGSA, yeah.
AGSA, okay, so, I don't know anything about them, I don't want us to, so next time when this item comes back, let's bring some information on that, I don't want to create a government within a government, an enforcement within an enforcement, that group of people can go and talk to gardeners and try to teach them, or show them, or take them to a facility and show them the equipment, how does it work, or give them one, and I don't think that's, that's, that's appropriate, but we can do that, the city can do that, if that's the, that's the goal. Next thing you know, we have the same issue with the restaurants, they're going to go to restaurants and say, "These are the items you can use, these are the..."
We do that.
We do that.
No, we have a third party that does that.
Who's the third party?
Mayor, councilmembers, we can come back with alternatives for these, for you to weigh, whether it's us bringing in a consultant or contractor, or it's us doing something through flyers, mailers, door hangers, we can come up with a number of different alternatives to sort out at that meeting, so.
All right, thank you.
Under incentives, Mayor Satrian, I definitely, definitively have you stating that, the rest of the council, this could include either, you know, programs that kind of help market and promote them, or we could also consider financial incentives, are there any additional councilmembers that would be in support of?
Yeah, I mean, if there are things where financial incentives are needed, like most of the plastics ordinances, the products are, you know, not more expensive, so I don't necessarily think we need them there, but the leaf blowers, there is state money, the state money, I think, is running out, so that's going to be an expensive proposition, but we, but I'm open to looking at that.
So it's just the two of us? No one else is interested in incentive programs?
No, I'm interested in incentive program, I don't, I thought I was clear.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Proactive enforcement, Councilmember Kusakian, based on your description with the parkways and whatnot, we, I kind of, by default, put you in there. Councilmember Najarian, I also have you discussing the proactive enforcement, are there any additional councilmembers that would like to see us study that more?
The park.
And that doesn't have to mean just us necessarily patrolling for those leaf blowers, but if we have an inspector who's on a block and there's an issue with one home, right now, they don't have the time to look the rest of the block, right? They're on to their next scheduled appointment, this would be them looking at the surrounding context, maybe taking in other things as well.
You're talking about for the future and not for your temporary?
Correct, for future, not right now.
I think my, my issue wasn't to have when they respond, well, if they are responding to a violation that has been reported, because we still have that process.
Correct.
I think it's appropriate for us to give our residents that tool for them to be able, when they see something, to say something, but if someone is going to go and inspect that, I think it should be part of their duty to at least look in, on that block to see if other similar violations, if other structures, homes, properties have a similar violation. Again, I'll give you another example, someone says, you know, "There's overgrown weeds and the front yard's a mess of my neighbor," well, there's three other homes that have a similar unkept yard, why is it fair that one person gets cited and two other neighbors, you know, escape unscathed? That is a weird kind of sort of Damocles hanging over everyone's heads, which I think needs to be corrected. And, again, part of this, my reasoning for this is if people know that their complaint is going to trigger an inspection of their entire block, including the person who may be calling and may have violation themselves, it'll perhaps temper that use of the complaint process.
If I may chime in on that, I agree, I, I mean, I think the fundamental problem with complaint-based enforcement is this selective enforcement issue, and so I know at one time we had proactive enforcement. I would like to see us move in that direction, and if moving in that direction is this interim step of just saying, "Look around, you know, that, that area," and try to create some level playing field, some balance, I support that.
Under mediation services, I have Councilmember Brotman and Councilmember Kusakian, would anyone else like to see us investigate and study the mediation services?
For, for the future, I'm happy to hear about it. All right.
And then, it seems that we have at least four for amnesty and special accommodations, three more as well. I believe the increase in heightened enforcement kind of goes along with us being proactive, so we'll lump those two together and come up with some alternatives. Otherwise, if, it seems that all of these, council would like to see us come back with more research, and we will develop our plan for the nights and weekends here as well, so we can start that as soon as possible. Otherwise, I believe that's a pretty clear, clear direction.
Okay, do we need a motion?
If you feel, if you feel comfortable with how Mr. Calvert summarized it?
I'll move, what is it?
What Mr. Calvert said.
Directions of staff as per Mr. Calvert's summary.
Perfect. Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Alcide?
Yes, and thank you to staff. All right, what's next?
Next, adjournment?
Oh, do we?
Move to adjourn, I'll second that.
All right, we're adjourned. Do you want to cancel? There's nothing adjourned, okay, so I guess we'll cancel the session.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Close.[1746.13]